And so it is now six thirty P M on February twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, and I'd like to open the Sherburne. Select.
Select board meeting.
Getting feedback from somewhere.
I'll mute it.
Um, I'm not sure where it's coming from. So I would like to open the Sherburne Select Board Meeting and ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the executive session agenda.
Good evening. Uh, item number one is meeting with town council to obtain legal advice pursuant to general law chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A three in Suffolk Construction versus D C M four forty nine mass, four forty four, two thousand and seven, regarding potential litigation with Joseph Hennessy and pursuant to general law chapter thirty eight, section twenty one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special or federal grant in aid requirements. Specifically, the Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter Four, Section Seven, Twenty Six, to discuss privileged communication from council regarding such potential litigation. Item number two is an executive session pursuant to general law, Chapter Thirty, twenty one, A, and ten, to discuss competitively sensitive information, indicative bids in the course of activities conducted as a municipal aggregator under section one thirty four of chapter one sixty four, if the chair declares that an open meeting may adversely affect the town's ability to conduct business in relation to other entities making, selling, or distributing electric power and energy.
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. Do I have any recommended revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, I do declare that we need to cover these two items in executive session to protect the town's negotiating position. So I move that we enter executive session now. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there a roll call vote? Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So let's, I'm gonna pause the recording. Okay, everyone, uh, we're gonna begin here at eight o'clock. We're getting reconnected with the select board, um, and I apologize for taking longer in executive session than we had anticipated, but we had some important things to consider. So, um, what I'd like to do is now open this, uh, select board, uh, meeting, open session, uh, February twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. It is now, uh, seven fifty nine, uh, P M, and I would like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda. Diane, you're muted, though. It'll work better.
Okay, we'll try this again. Um, good evening. After I read the agenda, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda as as presented. I don't have any public comment for tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics aren't anticipated forty eight hours in advance may be added. Item number one is a consideration of various grants received by the Sherburne Fire Rescue Department. I believe Chief Zaff Ward will be here for that. Item two is the planning board vacancy notification that we received in the discussion slash process of how the board wants to move forward. F Y twenty five budget request. Representative James Arena De Rosa emailed us. And item number four is annual town meeting, two thousand and twenty four, consideration of signing the warrant for annual town meeting. Item number five is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, draft minutes, and consideration of a one day liquor license at the community center. Item number six is a consideration of routine business, select board reports, and town administrative reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. Do I have any, uh, suggested revisions to the agenda as read? Hearing none, do I have a motion to, uh, approve the agenda as read?
I'm moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, roll call. Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Paul, are you back?
Yes, I did have one item I wanted to discuss.
Okay, sure.
Which is town caucus and the meeting on the seventh. I think we should be a caucus and not at a meeting.
We, we will be. We did this last year. What we, what we'll probably do is we'll meet at six thirty in person at Town Hall. That's what we did last year. And we can have like a forty five minute select board meeting and then walk across the street to the community center.
Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be, that, that's our regular select board meeting. It usually goes on for three or four hours. Can't we do that on a different day like Wednesday or?
Well, we can.
Tip a week or?
Or something. We can look at that, but we know that we have, uh, from one of our executive sessions tonight, we have to decide something that night. So it can't go later than that night. You know, we, we have to get back to Chris Petrini by the seventh.
So I mean, I think, well, sorry.
Go ahead.
It worked well last time. I do. And I think if you keep this only necessary items, keep a trim agenda. And if each one of us is conscious and minimizes our discussion to only those necessary items, then it can actually be done.
And we could debate whether we start at six or six thirty. We could possibly start at six instead of six thirty.
What about like at five o'clock?
I'd be honest, our meetings probably go three to four hours because we really do talk too much about stuff. I think we could, if we focus, we can keep it trim. I really do think that there's a lot of strange.
Caucus begins at eight, correct?
I don't know. I thought it was seven thirty. Is it eight?
I thought it was seven thirty.
All right, we'll, 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 we'll pick the, you make a good point, Paul. Why don't we, uh, this, we can talk scheduling without a, uh, offline and, um, we can agree, uh, just on scheduling. We won't be deliberating. We'll just be agreeing on timing for the next meeting.
I'll just, I do want to say I don't support it early as five. I think, uh, for the public who wants to attend that meeting, it makes it inconvenient for them. A lot of people have day jobs and work and actually, some people actually go into the office every day, and I wouldn't support something that early.
Agreed. So we'll, we'll work it out. So everyone's, uh, Diane can help keep us on the next rated narrow path there. All right. So, um, our first, uh, so we're ready to, to move on. Any other suggestions here? All right. So our first is acceptance of grants and, um, Chief Ward, are you on there? He's got training tonight, I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am here. I'll take you through the three grants. We got a twelve thousand, five hundred dollar, uh, Department of Fire Services equipment grant. That's to buy a fit testing machine. We have to test the, uh, mask sizes for all of our members every year. There's a, uh, eighteen thousand dollar hazard mitigation planning grant. That's to renew the town's, uh, hazard mitigation plan. That happens every five years. Um, and then there's a emergency management planning grant for some, uh, shared equipment between fire, police, and the D P W.
Excellent.
Just looking to have the grants accepted.
Oh, this is your motion, my friend.
Yes, so I'd like to move to accept the three grants as described and to authorize the town administrator to sign all these contracts that are presented as part of the grants and to and to authorize the expenditure of the funds in accordance with the terms of the grants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I am I as well. Thank you very much, Zach. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, Zach.
That's excellent. Yeah. I just let Addie May in. So we're, the next item of, of, on the agenda is the planning board vacancy notification, which also relates to the caucus issue, Paul. And I don't know, uh, if Jeremy, are you gonna talk to this or Addie May? I'm not sure who's, uh?
I can just say a couple of words. It is not much as an introduction needed, um,
Yep.
Other than, you know, the, as you all may well know, that one of the elected members of the planning board has resigned. That was on February seventh. And then at a subsequent, uh, planning board meeting in February thirteenth, the planning board did, did vote to uh, refer the vacancy to the select board and, and request that it be filled. So that, the copy of that letter from Addie May is in your packet. So now, um, you and the select board and the planning board as a joint uh, appointment has the, the option to, to move forward with an interim approval, a interim appointment. Um, uh, that person would serve until the election in May. Um, so it's, the, no, nothing has been advertised. Uh, there is a draft of a, of a vacancy announcement in your, in your packet as well. Uh, even though it hasn't been advertised, certainly the word's gotten out. There's been at least, I think, nine folks that I've seen have, have emailed in expressing the interest in being uh, serving in the interim role.
Wow.
But in, in essence, though, now the select board, uh, you have a policy decision to make whether, what, what you'd like to do next.
Can we get some of those people to volunteer for some of the other open positions as well?
It's either that or a fifteen person planning board. I don't know which, Stephen.
So if I could, I, I had, uh,
Go ahead, Paul.
Asked, I guess, for this agenda item sort of backwards.
Yep.
But the board has a policy of advertising for positions and not just pointing on the basis of word of mouth and who knows who and whatever else. I, I feel strongly that any position needs to be advertised. And there was a question, but did, did the law permit that? And I just wanna draw the attention to the statute, which says that after we get the notice, we after giving one week's notice to the planning board, we could fill a position, but that doesn't say when we fill a position. It's up to us when that, when we decide to fill it, we have to give seven days' notice. So we can do it in three months from now, or we can do it at any time that we want. There's no limit in the statute. And what I'm saying is there needs to be a minimum of thirty days. So that was the first point. The point again, of thirty days is so that the whole community, anybody out there who's not an insider has an opportunity to know about it and to participate in it. And this is a draft notice. We've had these, uh, these discussions before. It is the policy of the board. The second point is that caucus is taking place on March seventh. And at that caucus, there will be citizens gathered and there will be nominations made for a person to fill both positions on the planning board, the, the new vacancy and the existing, uh, expiration of term. And after that caucus, there's going to be a, someone who's won the caucus nomination and other people who may or may not decide to go on and may or may decide to drop out. So I don't think we should make any decisions until after caucus. And after caucus and after the thirty days, that is so close to the election. The election is May fourteenth. So caucus is March seventh, so let's say we go thir-, uh, somewhere in here thirty days. So we're, we're looking at filling the position in late March or early April for an election that's taking place on May fourteenth. I would be disposed towards going with the person who has survived caucus and is the official candidate. But I'd wanna see that process play out before I even make that decision. So I don't think anything should be done tonight other than to advertise for this position.
Somebody's got a new puppy. Uh, so I agree you, in other words, you're saying we should, I, I view the advertising could help attract candidates to caucus also.
Yes.
So, so I would think we should, could start advertising as soon as possible. Is that?
Yes. So that's what I'm suggesting we do tonight is to advertise for the position. And then let's regroup on this discussion after caucus, after we see what happens at caucus.
Okay. Let's see, uh, we have two other select board members. Uh, I don't remember which one was first. So Marion, you're on the left, so, uh,
Yeah, I was first anyway.
Okay.
Uh, you know, basically, I agree with Paul. Uh, but, uh, just to remind us, there will be two caucus nominees. So it's, if we were going to put one of those people forward, it would, there would be a select or decision there that would put someone in place and give them maybe an advantage for, for election in a month's time. So is there the option of simply, I'd wanna know how the planning board feels about this, but is there the option of simply, uh, not filling the seat, just holding off? We don't have to fill it, uh, before the town election, or do we?
You wanna answer that, Paul? I don't think we have to. We have, you said we can't, we can do it, but didn't say we are required to do it.
Well, the statute uses the word shall, but it's instructional and not mandatory. Number one, it'd be a long explanation to explain what that meant.
Yeah.
Because there's no date set here. If we and with, with the election coming up, I think it's on May fourteenth, maybe?
Right, yeah.
That is easy this to, for us to say, we'll fill the position if vacant on May fifteenth. So the word shall has been met. And we do nothing. And then we see what the voters do. And while there's two positions, one is to fill an unexpired term only, and the other is for a full term. So they are distinguished
Yep.
both at caucus and on the ballot.
Yes.
The, I, I don't know the length of the unexpired term, but it's, I don't, it can't be three years. So it has to be something less than three years. So it'll be one position.
It's two years.
Two years.
So there'll be one position for three years and one position for two years on the ballot.
Correct.
And the position that we could fill, we can't fill the three-year position because it's not vacant. We can fill the two-year position if we choose to. So I, 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 I don't think we need to make that decision tonight because it may well be at caucus, there's only one candidate that wins, and everybody else drops off. It may very well be that someone so outstanding shows up, such, you know, Albert Einstein, world-known planner or whatever, that we're so overwhelmed that we get stars in our eyes and we wanna appoint that person. We can make that decision at any time. All we have to do is give seven days' notice.
Yep.
The reason, just a little footnote here, the reason why we put seven days' notice in the statute is because selectmen were doing this stuff without notifying the planning board or giving them forty-eight hours' notice, and they didn't have time to, to get their group together, and it wasn't convenient. So the planning board always got the short end of the stick. So we put seven days in there so the planning board could actually attend. And this thing works as a, like a committee of the whole where they will be the five of us and, uh, four of them for a total of nine votes. And you need to get a majority of the nine votes. Somebody needs to get five votes out of those nine if we're going to fill the position.
Yeah, if we are, but we don't have to. Yeah, we can make that decision, and I agree with Paul.
Okay, Eric?
Um, don't see Jackie on the call. Um, she's not on the call. Can anyone answer me? So let's say we do put someone in um, before the election for the two-year term, not for the, obviously a three's film. Um, and we do put someone in for that, uh, will that, will the ballot state, um, candidate for reelection? That is an advantage. If it, um, does anyone know if the ballot will actually state that?
Yes.
Okay, it'll stay candidate for reelection. Okay. Good, that is a thought.
Well, I don't think that's true, and I'll tell you why. I, I know Paul's right, but I think it's, uh, time-wise not right. See, because the problem is if we do appoint someone, we would advertise it for thirty days first, don't you think? Are you, are you recommending? So if we advertise it, I think she will have already had to make the ballot be official. It'll be too late for her to make the ballot be different.
Okay.
I, I, I know you're right fashionably, Paul, but I think timing-wise, we wouldn't have the name and time for her to put it on the ballot.
Yeah, practically, it would be feasible.
So, yeah, so I think effectively, you know, we, and we could go with the caucus nominee, but what if they don't win the election again? And then you pointed someone who worked for, you know, five weeks or whatever it was, so. Um, it's kind of complicated.
If it's competitive, I would not pick the person based on just caucus nominee. I'd actually wanna look at the resumes, do whatever, make my own opinion, blah, 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 blah.
But if we just do what Paul rec, I'm kinda leaning towards Paul's recommendation, just let the election decide. Caucus will pick a, uh, two caucus nominees. I'm thinking maybe the three-year term, the incumbent will run again. I don't even sure, I'm not sure who's up, but uh, they'll probably pick the two candidates. They'll pick the two candidates that they wanna choose, presuming they get candidates. And we can just do it, and, and appoint someone on that. We can still advertise. But I think if we advertise now, it'll help caucus be more effective. So, um, Steven, do you wanna?
Um, yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, I mean.
Oh, go ahead, Eric. I'm sorry, Stephen.
Go ahead.
Just so you know, and I think it's safe to say this, Will's not running. It will be an open seat on the full term.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I was unaware of that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, generally I am in agreement. Uh, you know, I think my position coming in to this meeting is that we should either fill it with the, uh, after the minimum seven-day period or uh, just don't fill it until, um, the election because, again, just, just for all the same reasons, um, it's such a short amount of time. I think that ultimately we are giving one person a quote-unquote unfair advantage by, um, appointing them so close to the election. I would say with the, um, blessing of the planning board, uh, members in attendance, you know, a, as to whether or not you actually need a person during that six-week period between when we would be appointing them and when there's an election. You know, I, I don't know how many planning board meetings you are likely to even have during that time period. Um, it'll, to me, it seems like it makes more sense unless there is one very obvious candidate, um, you know, but if Jeremy says there are nine people have, have indicated interest, I just, I don't see how we're going to sort out between nine candidates, um, that there is one obvious candidate. Um, so so I, I would be in favor of basically not feeling it until after the election.
Eric?
Well, check. And we have confirmed, then, Paul, you don't have to explain the different types of shall that we're still not required to do. So I just wanna make sure that, because it did say shall. I looked at it a little bit with Jeremy and stuff like that, but we are not actually required to do this.
Yeah, it's I could speak offline. That, that's a half-hour explanation to explain the difference.
I know. That's okay.
A mandatory shell and a instructional shell. This is an instructional shell. And we use the word shell because we were trying to make sure that the notice to the planning board was given. So the word shell really is to mod, it was intended to modify that, you know, hey, select board, stop screwing around with this. You've gotta notify the planning board. So the word shell got in there as opposed to you may know, you may choose to notify them, which was the, the other alternative, and that, that just didn't work. That isn't where the general court wanted to be, so.
As long as I'm clear, letting this slide, fly to the, uh, election, and that's my bias too.
Yep. So, uh, is it your sense, Paul, or anyone, that do we need to vote on this to, or?
I'd still like to advertise the position. Maybe because I think it would bring out more people. B, because it's, it's, it's just open government. Just I've come to really believe in the idea that all town positions should be open to all citizens. There shouldn't be anybody left out, and even those people who are busy commuting and working and raising families and all of that, they should at least have the option of knowing about it rather than you know, sort of insider trading that, you know, if you know somebody and you know somebody, then you get appointed to a position that nobody ever knew was available. But.
Yep. Is it, is it disingenuous of us to post a position for appointment by the select board when we do not intend to appoint anybody?
I, I actually think it is. I'm, I'm not comfortable posting a, a, a temporary position open unless we plan to fill it.
Well, do we have to post it that way? What if we posted, would, would just say there's openings on the, like when we sometimes don't have a committee that's not currently filled, we advertise then too. If we have a, a, a five-person committee and there's only three people right now.
The posting says that, uh, you know, interested people should submit their blah, blah, blah information to Diane Moore's though, which for an elected, uh, um, board position that should not be necessary, right?
Oh, that's a good point.
No, but what we do need sooner rather than later, and I was hoping we'd have it by now, is a, uh, a clear advertisement on the town website of what positions are up for reelection uh, this, this coming May. And, um,
I think that's Rick Novak, though. That mean the, the, the caucus, there is a caucus committee. Now, they get elected, they don't get elected until the night of caucus, but.
No, but positions being open usually is advertised, and I don't think the select, the only board has to do that.
Let's see if Jeannie can steer us through this one. Go, Jeannie, go ahead.
Um, I talked to Rick Novak. He's gonna put a list together of the open positions. I'm gonna try and get them up as soon as he gets them to me. So he's just trying to get his committee together and get it all done. So I will remind him again tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good.
Draw my suggestion then of, of advertising. The advertising I was thinking of was, was going to be just that there's a vacancy on the planning board. It looks like, number one, it's gonna be done. Number two, it looks like we're in agreement that we're not gonna fill the position. We're gonna let the voters fill the position. So I withdraw the notion of our doing our own advertising. Let let the process unfold the way it usually.
Let the caucus committee get the notice out, you're saying?
I would like to hear from the planning board members here, though, just to make sure that, uh,
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
it's okay that you're not like, oh, my gosh, we're dying here and we need somebody.
Yep. Addie, do you wanna, uh, weigh in? I'm jealous because you're skiing, but I'll still let you talk.
Oh, yeah, well. Skiing, but I'm mostly standing on the side of the hill and hauling gates and, um, yes, I mean, I'm skiing. It's race team, though. It, it is great. I am lucky, so, um, we are not posted as an official planning board meeting, so I will speak though just as one individual who has insight and, um, I guess, given that we at our Tuesday meeting withdrew two of the warrant articles going to town meeting, um, we are probably, you know, we're probably okay to wait till town meeting, I mean, till election to fill the spot. You know, there, there have been a couple of candidates that we are aware of, um, one of whom's been our minute taker since two thousand and eighteen, who's um, kind of an obvious choice, is knowing very well everything that's been going on in the planning board level. Um, but, you know, if there's nine interested, I had no idea there were nine interested. I know that there's, we had po, we had, um, advertised at our meetings that interested candidates should ask for the, the, uh, general application for any appointed position and, uh, send it into Diane Moore as our town H R representative. So, um, I guess to a degree that if the decision is the, um, to let the people, we always understood that this was an appointment only until it was filled by town election. So, um, I guess that the caucus is the opportunity for um, members to state their support for candidates who seem more qualified than others for a planning board. So I, I, it does, you know, at the, at the end of the day, yes, agreed with the decision for letting the position to be filled at town meeting, I mean, at election.
Okay.
So Addie May, you could very well nominate that person with, who's the minute taker at caucus. And
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be a very influential, uh, nomination from you because you're able to speak as to what the, the planning board uh, uh, needs. So it's not like the planning board is disenfranchised. That's the way these caucuses work, the planning board basically is gonna be there anyway.
Right, yeah.
As, as is the Board of Selectmen and, and other boards and committees. So you're, you're in a position to, to nominate anybody you want.
Right. No, I, I, I think that is, you know, exactly right. And then at the end of the day, having it be, I mean, I, I did from the beginning, did prefer that the two spots, because one is a two-year position and one is a three-year position. So they're both of sub, somewhat length that, um, it does seem fair that it should go to election.
Well, but I guess, Paul, I forget how caucus works, but we, they would have to nominate someone for the either the two-year or three-year spot. You're not nom, you're not gonna nominate two people and you, don't, don't they have to be nominated specifically for each spot?
Yes. In other words, you do not nominate nine people and then have the highest two vote getters take the two positions. No. First, you have the, the three-year position. You have nominations for that. Then you do the two year position. You have nominations for that. So you have separate votes.
Separate votes, but you could maybe nominate the same people the second time if you wanted to. Yes. Okay. I, I just. Forgot the process. Um, Frank?
Yeah, I was just gonna say in terms of, um, procedure and process. If there are, if there is a vacant position, then there are people that have applied for that, a vacant position. Should not that process also carry through that, uh. You know, the, the planning board and or the select, as well as the select board. Look at those, uh, applications and, you know, as, as a planning board and as a select board and make decisions based on that is, I.
We're not gonna appoint someone though, Frank. We're not gonna advertise.
I, I heard what, I, I, I heard what you said, but there are still not, there are still nine applications, nine people that fill out an application for this position.
Yep.
You know, uh, it wouldn't it only be fair to, to them? You know, that their applications will just got reviewed. I guess that's my point. It's a point of process and, and a point of, uh, procedure.
No, that's a good point, but I would be tempted to just notify them that. Uh, they can apply via caucus. They can make themselves be a candidate for caucus. So we could give them Rick Novak's. Contact information or whoever's receiving the caucus candidates. And we can just notify them that, that we won't be filling the position. They, on an interim basis, we'll just be. Filling it permanently and we'll use the caucus and the election to do that. Uh, anything? Uh, did anyone on the select board disagree with what I said?
Uh, no, but just to, uh, fill in a little bit, I, I understand your point, Frank. It's a good. It's a good point. You want to respect the people who took the, the trouble to apply, um. But I think the best solution is the one that we're proposing and, uh. This gives the planning board members. A chance to look at those candidates and choose two that they want to specifically nominate at caucus. Gives you guys actually more, more of a say rather than the select board appointing someone.
Who did they actually apply to Diane? Were you the person that received the applications? Who received the applications?
Um, I only received three that came through my, 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 uh, email. I, I believe that Jeremy must have received the other nine. I haven't seen them.
Yeah, Jeff, technically, you know, the, the quote vacancy was never truly advertised. It was really.
Yeah.
It's all been part of mouth.
Yeah.
And folks have, you know, sent in emails expressing interest. So, um, we could certainly, you know, easily respond to those emails, you know, as you, as you mentioned, Jeff.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thanks, Jeremy. I wasn't sure if some of them went to the, uh, planning board or not separately.
No.
I, I haven't done anything with them, um, pending this discussion.
I think this is a good approach. Is there any further discussion? I like, I like where we ended up with this. All right. Harry, none. I think, I think we've got a good solution and now we definitely have to attend caucus. So we're good to go. Uh, next agenda item, I'm assuming this is Deb. Are you or Jeremy presenting the fiscal year 25 budget request? This is ones for earmarks. Is that basically what this is?
Yes.
Is that you, Jeremy? Who's, who's presenting this?
Yes. That's me.
Okay.
We've gotten a request from Representative James Arena DeRosa's office. Um, to help, uh, inform them of, of what Sherburne may want to request for earmarks. Uh, last year we requested for the 350th anniversary, received $35,000, but then had that cut in half because of some of the. The budget cuts recently. So anyway, that process is back again for FY25. Uh, and, um, they're looking for some, some suggestions for the town, um, to request earmarks. In your packet, I did, uh, include a, I put together a list of some of the items that. We had talked about or in, and I gathered a year ago, uh, for potential earmark requests. That's in your packet. And just, uh, they, they're actually due to the representative's office by March 15th. If we have. A, a recommendation or a, or request that we'd like to consider. And to put in perspective, you know, they're, they're in the tens of thousands of dollars range. Um, not a hundred thousand dollars. So just, just to keep that in mind if you have ideas.
Some of these things seem to be things that we've already approved funding from other sources for.
Yep.
Um, like ARPA.
Right. The ones that seemed to, to come out to me after I looked at this, um, just recently, the ones that pop out to me. That you might want to consider for request were the ones rev, uh, uh, for the council on aging near the bottom of the list. Um, that could tie in nicely with some of the town campus improvements. Um, to help, uh, the council on aging do some outdoor programming.
Yep.
So there are a couple of items here that the general court would not adopt. Uh. So it might make sense to pick. Earmarks that are likely to be enacted. Like tree removal town wide, it's just not. Every town needs tree removals and it's more of a maintenance issue. General Court would, for these earmarks would be more. Likely to adopt. Something that's. More discreet. And, and actually gets the job done. The tree removal hundred thousand isn't gonna get the. The job done in Sherburne. And then that. The planning stuff. Is often a harder sell. To the general court.
Yep.
Then. Like fire station one exhaust capture ventilation system. Wow, that's a health issue. It's. It absolutely has to be done. It's. There are people in the general court who are ex firefighters. That. That would get some traction. So I'm, I'm just saying. That we should pick projects that are likely to be. Favorably received.
That's a good point too. And we should, do we have any sense, Jeremy, of how many, how? Man, I don't think we want to send them this whole list. So would, would we pick? I'm making up a number, but say pick five or something and, and they can choose from the five. You might want to give them more than they're likely to award. So they have a choice, but.
Along with the request, they put the, this year, they actually have like a prior, uh, spreadsheet. They wanted us to fill out with five. And prioritize. I think that's, that's in your packet.
Yep.
As well, so.
Yeah.
Oh, how do you think, um, water supply projects are likely to go, especially if, if they're PFAS mitigation type things?
Very good.
So I would, I would prioritize those.
But, but there's, there's other funding available for that. That's not earmark.
Yeah. And if we, they like to point to success or something that's done so that the water supply thing says a feasibility study. I think they tend to like. Something they can claim credit for.
Yeah. And if they, if they scratch a shirt, if they scratch a surface, they'll find out it'll be our ninth feasibility study over the last century.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I've just, I used to be on that committee. I've turned a pessimist in that whole thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I actually liked the bottom three. I think Jeremy was talking about, because I think they. To see elderly council, little aging and stuff like that. I think they also realized that the elderly are the highest voter turnout and it wouldn't hurt them any at all to. To put it in there. Um, I like the bottom three. And then we can talk about other things. I'm not into the one that has staff as one of a public nurse. Went to law. I think it's dangerous to actually put staff in there. I doubt it'll actually get on there.
Yeah.
There are a couple of public, uh, health. Things that are not very expensive. The public safety drone equipment and the fire station exhaust that was.
Didn't we already get the drone equipment that, yeah, we already got, they got a grant for that.
Yeah. This is a year old and, um, fortunately we've been able to, to check off a number of these.
Yeah, yeah.
The drones.
Body cameras.
From the surplus. Yeah, we got a grant for the.
I bet you, I bet you legislature loves body cameras.
We got, no, we got that already too. I think we got that already. Yeah, we got that already.
The federal.
We have two drones. We have a police drone and a fire drone now too, don't we?
What about the town hall campus, public water supply improvements? Would that actually be filtering systems for PFAS?
That would be.
That, that might be a good one, but it's.
Is that the one that you said that there might be money from other sources for that?
Yes, there should be money for.
Would it cover the entire project, do you think?
I think it's hard to get. Uh, I think it's a, through the SRF program, and I think be very difficult. And there's a share of, was it a class action lawsuit? I don't know how much of that, that will cover it.
Not only that, that's actually a warrant article. Maybe some of these are already on the warrant. And I don't know if we would then.
Yeah, definitely. On the warrant or for the capital request is for the design. Studying the design of the treatment.
Okay.
So the construction is, is a 200 to $300,000 cost. It's probably more than an earmark's gonna cover.
Yep.
I'd love that. I definitely support the PFAS, especially if it's something we're going for away, why spend tax money on it? We can actually get an earmark. Versus, I know we love our pet projects, but you know, this actually can be something useful and something that the town would do anyway.
And quite necessary, right? I mean legally mandated, right? So we don't, we don't have the option to not do it.
Right.
Absolutely. Yeah. I strive, I say put that on the top of the list and then put the bottom three down here, right under them.
Yeah, I would be, I would be in support of. Of, of Eric's list.
So Eric, we broke through your list again.
Um, the PFAS treatment, which one is it here? The, uh.
Town campus water supply.
Town hall campus water, yeah.
And then the bottom three, council aging facilities, council AGIT equipment and Woodhaven, Alba housing, security, lighting improvements.
And I suggest the fire station exhaust capture.
I like that one too, and that gives us five. So I like that. It's a great addition.
So there we got five. Okay. Now we have to prioritize.
I would, I would put them in that, that order.
Yeah, I would too. I think that's, that order works for me.
The one thing, the one danger, I saw this on another community, when you put the $7,500 one for the rest, they're gonna give you that one and say we gave you an earmark.
Yeah, but this past year they cut our earmarks in half. So, you know, I, we, we take what we could get.
Yeah.
I just don't know if you should wrap it into the other council aging and call it like 5750 or something like that.
Just collective council on aging improvements.
Can do.
Uh. All right. So I think that, that gives us enough to go on. And I think you said, we don't need to submit it till the end of March, didn't you say, Jeremy?
I think they'd like it by the 15th of March.
Yeah. So we're meeting again on the seventh. We're meeting on the seventh. So if you wanted to like, maybe. Kind of follow the input from tonight and make a. Short list and we could just confirm again, not vote tonight, but vote on the seventh.
So if, if. If I could, if we combine those two council aging items and made it 57. That, that means that's only four items and this, there's one. More that we could add. And the one more that I would add. Would be the farm pond fencing and security improvements. To make it five.
Okay.
I would, I would support that.
Yeah, that's fine.
They could still jump the fence all the time, so.
So let's see if Sean wants trees. Sean had his hand up. He's gonna tell us he wants to take trees down.
No, I actually agree with somebody's comment that we shouldn't be taking trees down with earmark money.
Yeah.
But I do, I. Um, recently the chief. Accepted a grant or you guys accepted a grant for the ventilation system at station one.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And I just confirmed with him. He's still a drone, but I just confirmed with him. And so that, I think that's fully covered. You probably should pull that off this list.
All right. Thanks.
All right. So if we take that, that off, can I suggest then going for the biggest item on the list? Which is the Washington Street, Maple Street intersection improvement, 750,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love it.
My only hesitation is they, state's already given us 500,000. Are, are they gonna say, you know, we already gave you half a million?
They already gave us 800.
They gave, yeah, gave us 800. So we've got that, that, that we've got that covered, um, for the construction of that.
Yeah.
Well, you have a, with existing with the, with the, using all of the whole year's roadway improvements, which could be actually used for roadway improvements. I would love to actually fill up the rest of whatever the cost system it is from that 800, whatever, and then minus the grant. And make that actually the roadway improvements. I want to call safety improvements as well. I want to call it Washington Street, um, intersection and safety improvements. Okay. Why would I, why would I burn through that capital money if I don't have?
I agree with that.
Okay.
I just thought it might reduce the probability of getting it if they knew that they already gave us a half a million the year before. They might say, hey, they're asking again. I, it might. Make it less likely is what I was thinking. But that's fine. So.
That was.
It wasn't, it wasn't an earmark, but we did get whatever it was called a spec or something like that. I forgot what it's called. Yeah, yeah.
They don't know that. None of those legislators don't know.
Well, you're probably right about that too. So let's just modify. You can maybe have six or seven on the list. If you think, Jeremy, we can on the seventh go down to five or. Whatever you think is the best way to, to distill it down. If you think. You know, the five, I'm fine with that too. Any other input on this from the select board?
That's great.
Go ahead.
If, if anybody gets a break again and wants to, to shoot it over, that's great. Feel free.
Okay. Next item is the, uh. The warrant, we, we always write the warrant in invisible links so we can reopen it all the time, but, uh. The warrant, I think we're down to, uh, Jeannie told me today, are we down to 15 warrant articles now, Jeannie? Is that right?
15.
16, my mistake.
No, 15.
15, that's what I said. Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure we'll still need the night board.
We, we, we've already made Mary Wolf's day. I don't think we're gonna need a second night if we only have 15 warrant articles. With some that are probably consent agenda items also.
So I move that we approve the warrant as. Presented by Jeannie Guthrie.
Uh, wait, I, I, I have discussion.
That's fine. He can make the motion. You go ahead.
Um, so. I just, I heard back from the, um, community preservation coalition today about, um. Um. They had asked to see the, uh, draft language for our warrant. Um, so they had some recommended changes, so I wanted to bring that to you. Uh, one is they noticed that the, uh, the language said, uh, commencing fiscal year 2025. They recommend 2026 just because it wouldn't take effect until, um, it was voted in November anyways. So you're already halfway through the year. So. They recommended that, that it should say fiscal 26. And then they also, they, you know, they noticed that, uh, we only, uh, requested the exemption for the first hundred thousand dollar residential. Um, they recommended also having, uh, including the exemptions for low income and moderate income senior, uh, exemption. And they also suggested including a hundred thousand dollars, uh, commercial industrial exemption. Um, their logic was with a largely residential tax basis will only reduce your CPA income by a small amount, but you'd be sending a message of support to the handful of small businesses in town. Um, so that was their, their, uh. Uh, logic on that. So I just wanted to bring that to the board in case. I know, Paul, you were the one who wanted to specify, um, exemptions. So. I suppose I'm, I would leave it up to you whether, how you feel about those changes.
Yes, I, 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 I support all of those. I want to. Also make the change of deleting the words or take any other action related there too. Because on this article. To me, it would be out of, outside the scope of this article for somebody to come up with a 3%. And no exemptions and so on and so on. It, it seemed. I'm trying to be as clear as possible that I'm. Supporting only. Going in with the easiest. Closest number. To what? Jeremy put together. In terms of our past experience, one that'll have least impact on the taxpayers. And see how it goes and then adjust it later. So I don't want the words or take any other action there too, because I want to clear. That it's this. And not, not something else that's gonna be very different.
I think that, that's in the language. He's just making a few modifications to it. Is that correct?
Yes, I agree with all of those. I just want to delete the last six words of the article.
Okay. So noted. Did you get that Diane or whoever's keeping it, Jeannie?
Yeah, we got it.
All right, uh, Eric?
So just to clarify, that would, um, give the a hundred thousand dollar exception only to commercial and not to residential. So when we spoke about this last.
Oh, it would be, it would be both.
Both.
Yeah, basically everybody gets their first hundred thousand.
The language right now only does residential. So they're just proposing to add commercial. I made that comment before that we don't have many, but. You know, we want to keep them in town and uh and send them to.
Right, I had one more uh. One more little comment about the uh the low income uh exemption. Uh, I I wanted to put a low income ex- exemption in there too, and I thought it would. Be a good cutoff to have anyone who. Applies for tax aid. Um, to be exempted, but I think maybe the language that that they propose is better. I just wasn't sure how clear that language is about who is exempt and who is not. Could you reread it? Uh, Steve?
Yeah, I can read you um the specific. They they made an. An edit basically uh to our uh our draft language. Um, so provided that the surcharge on real property shall be one percent of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year twenty twenty six. And to accept the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under section three E of said act. One, the first one hundred thousand dollars of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property. Two, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low income housing. Or low or moderate income senior housing in the town as defined in section two of said act. And three, the first hundred thousand dollars of value of each taxable parcel of class three commercial property and class four industrial property as defined. In section two A of said chapter fifty nine. So the so the the exemption is is. It is well laid out in the actual Community Preservation Act, so we're just invoking options one, two, and three. There the options are already defined in the act.
And that'll be explained in the FinCom report, the advisory committee report.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You need like a motion to approve that specifically? You could just make a motion to approve the warrant without its.
The motion was to approve the warrant, but with the amendment. Men that to say with the amendments described. In the discussion just had.
Good motion, Paul. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so let's take a vote. Uh, roll call Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
I am I as well. And then do we have to Jeannie come in and sign it tomorrow or what? When do we sign the warrant?
I mean, you can come in and sign it tomorrow at the town hall and I can just add the um amendments to the C. The um CPA article.
And and we used to come in anyway when we get to the consent agenda to sign the liquor license, uh, don't we?
No, the liquor licenses have been approved. It just states that it they've been approved at your meeting.
Okay.
So we don't need, you don't need to sign those.
So do do people have the time to come in and sign tomorrow if you can, or do you want to make a motion to just authorize uh? Then to sign for us?
I I can't come in tomorrow, but I could come in Monday.
I'm the same. Yeah, I'm the same. I can come in Monday.
I think it's good for us to sign. Good for us to sign the warrant. In person, I feel, rather than delegating it because it's a pretty big, you know, once a year thing.
If it's ready, I'll sign it tomorrow.
Okay. Yep. All right. We're on a roll. Consent agenda. This is your other forte, Paul.
Will approve.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
I am I as well. So now we're on to routine business, select board reports first. My first select board report was what we discussed a little bit earlier. We have to decide what we want to do on March seventh. I think we came to a consensus of starting earlier that night and ending. Does anyone know is caucus? Do you know, Jeremy, is caucus start at eight or seven thirty? I don't know for sure.
Eight.
It's eight? So why don't we do a meeting starting at a time we can discuss now and ending at seven thirty? That gives us a a. Restroom break and a walk across the community center break of a half hour. So if we met at six thirty, it gives us an hour or we could decide to meet at six and have an hour and a half select board meeting. I think Diane, you already have a. Initial agenda items. It's not a huge agenda. It's not a huge.
No, I have very little. I have very little on the agenda for the seven.
Yeah, so I think we could meet it. You know, if you want to be safe, we could pick six, but I even think we could meet at six thirty and um just have a one hour meeting. In person in town hall. And walk across to the community center. Does that?
Are we gonna have an executive session that night too, though?
Yeah, we're gonna have the executive session.
You will, and you may want to start um ahead of the advisory public hearing meeting, which is on the sixteenth of March. You may want to start taking your positions on the warrant articles.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we need to do that. We should go into the advisory hearing. With positions on each of these articles voted by the board.
I think we better meet at six if we.
Yeah, I think we're, if you say that, I sort of agree, although we're down to fifteen articles and a number that are the typical con-. Typical consent agenda items about the budgets and things like that. There's probably only, you know. Half a dozen at most that we need to really think about.
Well, the controversial ones of the planning board was, but I heard that they were withdrawn.
They were.
That's correct. Yeah, there's only one.
The affordable housing one is still in.
Yes.
Well, that's the one I I I I I don't like the affordable housing one. That's the one that changes. The fifteen percent that we have for that Cool Street project to. Ten percent.
Ten percent, that's correct.
And Eric and I need at least half an hour to argue about CPA, so.
Well, so let's.
Plan for two nights. Plan for two nights of town meeting.
Let's. How about if we meet on March seventh at six P M? Can people feel that's comfortable and we could? Get to the community center by.
Would you consider having another night for this? So we can have a real selectments meeting go as you know, as late as we need to. Discuss.
We can do that. I mean, it gets, you know, the next. It depends on what other events are going on. You know, if we go to another night, that's when another board meets. You know, we try to keep the meetings separate, like Board of Health meets on Wednesday nights.
It worked well before. I think we can control the length of it. We can actually make that whole warrant one last, so if we can cut it off at any given time and just simply continue it. It gives us better parking for caucus. I can never find parking for caucus, so I'm gonna get there in two hours earlier. I think just do it and cover what we can and then continue it if we have to to another night, but do it and just cover what we can. We all have that night put aside anyway.
Iterating your comment from about two hours ago, we also tend to overtalk, so we might just cause ourselves to be more efficient.
But there's some articles I don't know how I'm. Supporting, like the last article, the citizen article.
Yeah.
You probably want to hear from. The opponents and the proponents a little bit and get a better sense of.
Do we have another select board meeting, Diane? I'm interrupting you, Paul. I'm sorry. Do we have a select board meeting before the advisory public hearing after the seventh or no? No, no, you're muted, my dear.
We use, I usually book us for at least forty five minutes before the advisory hearing starts to go over any issues that you may have at the last minute.
But we don't have another regular select board meeting between March seventh.
And then two weeks after that.
What's the hearing date? I forget. Is it twentieth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth, and I think we'd meet on the twenty second.
So Paul, if we had some carryover, is it too late to do it? In forty five minutes before the advisory hearing?
That's really an important vote. It's an important vote for the board and it should be done where the public can hear it and. Understand our reasoning why we. Because in in voting. Our support, we're not just voting our support, we're voting to recommend to the voters that they support it.
Yes, but I I will say I was on advisory. There there have been years when we voted in the advisory session on some articles. I'm pretty sure.
There was. It definitely was. I was on the board that time. I still say. If you would cover, then decide if we go another night. It'll be recorded meeting. I mean, we're still gonna have Rick there writing, recording, recall, we doing whatever else. You want to record that meeting or?
I would have Dover Sherwin cable TV there. Yes, I agree.
Yeah, they go over Sherman or hybrid, whatever you want to do, so they can see our discussion. Our votes are records. Everyone can see that 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 there's the votes, you know what I mean? Um, I have a feeling we're gonna split, but I don't know, two or something like that. If you want to hold those another night, that's fine as well. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'm okay with. I would say. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
What about the Thursday before the advisory hearing?
Yeah, that's what Sean just texted, the fourteenth of March.
I mean, I would I would be okay with essentially saying, let's try to do it all on the seventh. We'll have the warrant discussion last as the agenda. And if it it'll, it should be obvious whether we do or don't have enough time to discuss it. And if we don't have enough time, there's still enough time to post a meeting for the fourteenth to essentially finish the warrant, you know.
Yes.
We can have our own consent vote. We could actually go right on down and be like items one through whatever. We could just all vote unanimously.
Exactly.
Oh, we got all these capital projects this.
Yes. But there's only fifteen in total and there's probably ten at the front that are pretty perfunctory.
Yes, but of the fifteen articles, just the list of capital projects is probably.
I know.
Fifteen of those projects.
At that same night, we have the budget review.
I don't. Not that I know of, do we?
Well, that's what is listed on the, that's what's listed on the um. On the select board schedule for March seventh, it says budget review. It does say that.
What budget? What budgets?
I I think that was plugged in from the very beginning. I probably have to just go in now and take that out.
But we've reviewed all the budgets, haven't we?
You have, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to have further reviews of them, that's fine, but you have to review all the budgets.
I feel like we had a prior uh um, let's say, debate among the board. As to whether it was necessary to have multiple budget reviews.
Oh, yeah.
And I think some of us felt like, no, Jeremy just showed us all of them and I'm fine with it. And then some people were like, no, we have to talk about it again later. So I think that's the talk about it again later date because.
I think I was the talk about later guy and I would. We're good now.
Okay, I'm good with that.
All right. I concur.
Let's say cover what we can. And you'd be surprised how efficient these on live meetings are with no roll votes and everything else.
Exactly.
You know.
All right. Is there any other select board reports? We did get the final signed document and we're supposed to get the check. For the library settlement shortly. So that's a good thing. They're actually.
On that, Jeff, I had suggested to Jeremy that, and I don't know if he passed it on to the board. That we get a, you know, blow up of the check and we have a little ceremony.
Yep.
Uh, because it is a memorable event.
Yep.
So not only is the check pretty good, which is six hundred and sixty thousand, but this forgiveness. Or cancellation of our obligations for another five hundred.
And and the punchless, it's one point two million roughly, one point two five million.
Yes.
We have to make a big deal of that because, you know, the town always reminds us of the library.
I don't know. I I I somehow think.
I'm I'm with Eric on this. It just reminds them that it was all the budget.
I'm like, we're happy with it, but I don't know if the ju- the public at large is happy with it, you know, after. I mean, originally, the town was only supposed to spend, what, like a million dollars and uh.
Yeah, that's a lot. Well, that's not what we voted for, but that was what it was described. What's what's Sean say? You need to vote support. Your own budgets and capital. I thought we did that already. Did we not do that?
I think we held all our votes.
Do we hold the votes? Well, we can vote on the seventh.
Yeah, I think that's.
We can vote on that on the seventh.
We're gonna do that on the seventh?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be bad just to review what our what our votes were, what our discussion was, then we're better.
Yeah, that one pager has it has it on there. That that has even what the vote was on there, that one page summary spreadsheet.
Right.
I still think the fourteenth makes more sense.
Well, we can do both.
Yeah, we'll do both.
Yeah, we'll do both. That's our fallback position if we get wordy.
It'd be nice to have a live meeting too, really will. Get back to that.
Uh, Dan, set us straight, please.
Uh, thanks, Jeff. I was just gonna say that in terms of the advisory public hearing, right, which I'm thinking will start at eight thirty. Um, even with just fifteen warrant articles, there are some that I think the discussion will go on for a long time. Uh, just my guess. So it would be really, really helpful if, as you were discussing. On the select board could take positions and vote on as many of those as possible before the. Public hearing rather than, it has been done in the public hearing in the past.
Yeah.
But the meeting will just, I think, a little smoother and more efficient to the extent that that you're able to uh vote on those ahead of time.
The cu- what you're saying is those meaning the controversial ones are the challenging ones rather than the perfunctory ones.
Yes, yeah.
I got it.
I maybe I said it backwards, but that's what I meant.
No, I just was clarifying.
So I, do you need more? I I suggest we meet six o'clock on a regular time. I don't even want to go five thirty, but I might be somewhat of um disadvantage to, or five thirty for executive even. I don't know if that's.
I don't know that I could make uh five thirty.
I don't know if there's an executive. Is there an executive session for that night? There is?
Yeah, because remember the one, the thing we were talking with Petrini about.
Oh, that that one is there, but that's gonna be quick.
It might be quick, yeah.
Yeah. I think six is better. I would go with six because. People are gonna get caught in traffic or who knows what. It's just. We can, we can go to seven forty five. You know, you can stumble in fifteen minutes at the community center. We could go to seven forty five. So that gives us an hour and forty five minutes, basically. We. We should be able to do that. And if we don't, then we'll just add, you only need forty eight hours notice. We can add the uh fourteenth of uh March. As another meeting if we need it as a fallback.
Yep.
All right, any other select board reports? All right, next thing is town administrative reports. Jeremy, you have anything you wanna?
Uh, yeah, just two two updates for you. One, actually regarding the budget. Uh, we just heard some good news from Maya, our the health insurance provider. So they had been projecting or having us hold an eight and a half percent increase in the FY twenty five budget. They've gotten back to us that our our increase will be two point two percent.
Oh, that's a big difference.
That's enormous. That's enormous. Yeah, that's enormous.
So what's the bottom line on that?
That alone is cutting out about a little over a hundred thousand dollars from the.
Yeah, 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 that's a.
Budget, so that's great. Um, so wanted to relay that. And also um some unfortunate news in that um Chris Canny, our chief building official. Uh, is um going to be taking a another job nearby to his home. So he's.
Yeah.
He's accepting a job offer at the town of Mattapoiset. Uh, which is is much closer. So he's uh just gave that gave that notice to us today, but he's gonna, he's. Very willing to help work with us on filling, you know, uh interim roles and and so forth. So we won't have any gap. Coverage, but um just another position that we'll need to to find a good uh placement for.
Okay, that's good. I'll I'll talk to him because I know I have a good friend that lives in Mattapoiset, has lived there his whole life, so I'll maybe touch base with him.
Yeah, it's it's a much shorter commute and the the hours, it's a thirty five hour a week position and, you know, he feels.
Yeah.
Uh, he he's really appreciative of of Sherburne and has enjoyed it. There's nothing wrong. It's just it's a little better fit for his family right now.
Yeah, what? He's actually on the Cape, isn't he? He's pretty far out.
Yeah, he drives an hour and a half each way.
Yeah.
My God.
Yeah, I knew that.
Be like a fifteen minute drive for him, so.
And only that, he's he's got a young family now too, I believe.
Yeah.
So there is something we can advertise, a position we can advertise.
I I think Paul was raising his hand because he's applying for it is what I think. All right, so I don't uh have any other reports. So that's all you have, Jeremy?
Yes, I do. That's it. Thanks.
Have have a good uh rest of your time in Florida.
Thank you.
So do I do a motion to adjourn?
We're good to go, I think. Paul, thank you. So second?
Second.
All right, let's let's vote. Eric?
Hi.
Steven?
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion?
Hi.
I might as well. So thank you all for uh supporting us and Dan, thanks for hanging in there with us.
So if I have to see all you guys in person, I may not re- know who you are.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Only seeing these faces.
Exactly.
We should have name tag.
We might. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, she'll have it. We we actually might have to find our name tags to go on the table. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good night.